Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to call to order the Vanburg County School District Board of Trustees meeting. The order, today's date is March 6th, time is 6:00 PM. Board members, you have had an opportunity to receive and review the agenda prior to tonight's meeting. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor of this, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it and the motion carries. Next, we are down to approval of the minutes for the February 9th, 2023, as well as February 23rd, 2023 minutes. You've had an opportunity to receive and review these prior to tonight's meeting. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to approval of both sets of these minutes from the meeting?
Madam Chair.
Yes. All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor of this, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries. We are now down to school reports, which is item number four on the agenda. And first up, we have Chastity Evans from Richard Carroll Elementary School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. Great, how are you?
I am fabulous.
Good.
All right, so our report this month, our current enrollment is up two students from last board meeting. We're currently at 636. We have had 44 discipline incidents documented in power schools since the last board meeting, and you can see the breakdown in your board report. We continue to work on teacher observations, although they have slowed slightly with the screen coming in. There's just been a lot going on. So we did 15 this month and then 153 for the school year, still working on that. We did start something new. From March 1st to March 31st, we're doing an Attendance Matters campaign with our students. And so basically, any student that does not miss more than one school day, we are going to put them in a drawing for a monetary gift, one for each grade level. K4 for sixth grade, and we're working with community partnerships to try to get donations for those. Our emergency officer is helping me with that, this Denise Croftie, and so she's working on helping me get donations. Right now, I think we're at $125. So we're working on that. We'd like to give each student, the winners, $25 gift cards to something that they want, you know? We have a lot going on in the next month. Field trips, Project Beyond Field Trip to Lexington County Museum. And then, actually, I think the dates are wrong on this. Should say March tomorrow, March 5th, excuse me, and then Wednesday, March 6th, I just realized that. We actually have a vaping presentation coming for our 4th through 6th grade students. They're going to meet with them individually by grade level and talk to them about vaping, the effects of that. Thursday, we have a 5th grade field trip to the SC Aquarium. Then the 13th through the 17th, we have Scholastic Book Fair going on. We have some drills coming up, active shooter and a tornado drill this month. Because we had some difficulties with getting, we asked quite a few folks to come into Black History Month and do a presentation for us. We were unable to secure that. But SC State dancers are coming in lieu of coming in February, they're coming in March, and it's part of Women's History Month. We have a school-wide TDA practice for our upcoming SC Ready Assessments on March 21st. And then, of course, March 24th is professional development. And then on Tuesday, March 28th, we would love for you guys to join us. We are having our first-ever 6th grade career night. And we have a variety of people coming from all different occupations to talk to the kids and their families. So they get to choose three that they go and talk with for about 15 minutes each. So that's something new we're doing. And that's it.
The March 17 event.
I think it's on the calendar for 9 o'clock. We're doing two performances, one at 9:00 and one at 9:30. I should have put that on there, I apologize.
Great. All right, does anyone have any questions? Nope.
All right, thank you so much.
Next up, we have Denise Miller from Vanburg Airheart Middle School, and I have not been to see her. Is she here? No?
She's not. This is what he says, she's on the way.
Okay, well then we'll move, set hers aside and we'll move on to Vanburg Airheart High School. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Vanburg Airheart High School. South Carolina Pro Star Invitational is going on right now. We currently have eight students in rural beach, and this is our culinary students. They're competing in a management competition. And I had a chance to really explore the food truck that they designed and a well-written business plan, and I had a chance to sit on a panel and ask them questions. They're, I think they got fourth in the state last year, so we're hoping to bring home some good news. Very excited about that, and that is Ms. Kathy Hunt. Item 2, Black History Month program, it was well-attended, very, very well-attended. And I was worried about the student response to this, but I was amazed. When you set a standard and expectation for our students, they rise to it. There was no issues whatsoever, and the speaker that we had, Dr. Willie Todd, was amazing. High school students gave him two standing ovations during his presentation. So they were very, very engaged. We also had the Voorhees University Concert Choir came, and that was just an amazing event. Junior and sophomore IGP's are complete, and the freshmen are actually going on right now. So Vanburg Airheart High School is getting ready to start our scheduling process for the next year. Guardian Black Award Ceremony happened on February 17th. Again, very pleased with the parent participation, so much so that we are considering moving that into the Temazium. We're glad that parents are coming in and we welcome that. Open House happened on February 16th, and again, just well-attended. In the past, and I just want to address the concerns openly, we've had some parents complain about teachers and coaches, so going forward, not being able to attend because of all of the athletic events that we have to attend. Going forward, we're going to look for ways to tie in our open houses with other events. For example, meet the Raiders can be adjunct to with the open house events to try to come back to those areas, those businesses. Mastery Connect, we have given our benchmarks. Friday, we did algebra and US history, and today we just completed our biology and English 2. So this is a new program for, I know Vanburg holds district one schools, but we are definitely using it to our advantage and trying to achieve more success on our end-of-course scores. And lastly, the night days, we posted a blood drive Friday, March 3rd, and I'm waiting for the official number, but again, it's well-attended.
All right, does anyone have any answers to ask? In terms of this, I guess, ask a little bit, what is exactly the Mastery Connect extension? I mean, obviously, it's a special test, though.
Okay, so.
Is it by the State Department or?
Well, it's not by the State Department. This is a program.
Do you want me to answer that? Teacher question, I'm sorry, it's watching Miss Blossom Lee.
Could somebody please explain a little bit about the Mastery Connect?
Yes, Mastery Connect is a district benchmark that we choose to assess students on the standards that they've been taught on. So MAP is kind of a global setup, it's a global screener that we give three times a year, and it assesses students on all of the standards for their grade level. But Mastery Connect is a benchmark where teachers can manipulate it to assess them on the standards they've taught, for the standards they haven't been taught. Teachers have control of the questions bank. Also, Mastery Connect is an assessment where we can manipulate that and provide accommodations to students when they're taking that assessment and replicate the actual state testing environment as much as possible. So in reference to me being a MAP teacher, if I taught 156 grade math standards thus far this year, I can give a benchmark on this 150 standards versus all of the standards I'm supposed to cover for the entire year.
So now we're looking at a much more realistic score of what, how the children are functioning to this point.
That's right.
And then I penalize for what the money she hasn't gotten to yet. That's a great idea. Who, is this?
Yeah, the curriculum teams that we established this year, and the curriculum leads, and myself, and all the principals. That's Mastery Connect, it's called TG20, you might have heard of it. Previously was TG21, but they provide a South Carolina State Standards Test Bank to where teachers can go in and select test, actual replicated test questions based on the standards they've already taught. So it's a benchmark assessment where you can tailor it to test what you need to test your kids on.
Does it go down to elementary grade?
Yes, it does. Yes, ma'am.
That's my superintendent.
No, that's right. No, I mean, I'm thrilled to know about that.
Yeah.
I think that has a lot of implications.
It's an awesome teaching, if it's used as it should be, and if it's used with fidelity, it can be an awesome teaching and planning tool for a teacher.
Wonderful, thank you.
And you can give it as much as you like. You can give it weekly, by-weekly, or every week.
Don't give them any ideas. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Mr. Smith. All right, next up, we have Rhonda Ray with Denmark Ola Elementary School.
Good evening.
Good evening, Rhonda Ray.
Denmark Ola Elementary, the current enrollment is 275. The incident count by behavior, I think we're about the same as last month. The Black History Program, it was a great turnout. Students did a great job with the poetry, the dances, the entire program was really nice. School Climate Winners, made the announcement for those actually today, so for the month of February. First grade, the winning class was Ms. Richardson's class, and on the 3rd and 5th grade hallway, Mrs. Summers' class. So they will have a pizza party on Friday, and then the trophy is given to them today. So we're trying to encourage our students to, you know, follow the rules. That's what the school climate trophy and pizza party each month is for. The Dream Box winner for this month is Ms. Data's 5th grade class. So again, today we delivered that trophy to her class. Mastery Connect, we're in the process of analyzing the data. Teachers are using that data to help drive their destruction. Second Step, that's the SEL curriculum that the district passed for this year, and I've heard positive feedback from our teachers. They really like that it's very short, something that they can do quickly with the students, but also they've seen that it's effective, and the students like it as well. Our calendar of events, we're in the process of observing National Read across America Week, and there was a flyer that we attached that has the daily activities. So it's interesting to see, you know, the students and even some of the staff participate in those activities. Also, this week is the Book Fair. The students went, today was the first day, and, you know, we had a good response. Hopefully, some, you know, more students, if they didn't get a chance to bring their money to purchase something from the Book Fair, they'll be able to do that the rest of this week. Next week, on March 14th, we have Spring Picture Day, the end of the quarter is on April 21st. On our PD Day of March 24th, that would be our Unit 3 training for those who are participating in letters. And then we'll have our next Mastery Connect Benchmark the week of March 26th.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Patricia Goldsmith with Denmark Ola Middle School.
I apologize, that's my alarm. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As of March 1st, our enrollment was at 100.6 students. We just enrolled a new student today that has just moved to Denmark. And so we are welcoming that student, and we're, we'll be at 1:47. Our discipline report, since the last time we met, there are 26 incidents and they're outlined on the principal's report that I submitted to you. Students participated in safety drills to address bomb threats. We focused on what we need to do and what revisions we need to make for the safety plan, and we've been doing that collaboratively with the other principals. Dr. Ray and Dr. Simmons and myself get together to work on that because, of course, if there's a threat in one part of the building, we need to evacuate the whole building. Excuse me, interim reports were issued to our students on February 16th. Spring Intervention Letters will be sent home mid-March to address academic deficiencies. We sent letters out in December, and so this will be our second effort to address any academic deficiencies before we embark into our fourth quarter. College and Career Day is planned for March 23rd, and the purpose is to expose students to post-secondary options, and that will be from 8:15 to 11:15. Different careers and colleges will come in, and our students will move from room to room to listen to those, it's sort of like a passport system. And so we tried to pull on some careers that are a little unorthodox, maybe, so that students can have that exposure from middle school. It's very important as we move them to the high school so that they understand the pathways when they get to 9th grade. We have begun our planning process for master scheduling. We continue our recruiting efforts to have Denmark Ola Middle School fully staffed with teachers there this coming year. We're excited about that. And our students did complete job shadowing, our 8th graders completed that on February 7th, and it was very successful. Our students went out to different places in the community, CBS, and they had a really good experience of learning just the different soft skills that it takes to be in the workplace. Dr. Simmons is not here this evening, and so I'm going to also do Denmark Ola High School.
All right.
Did you have any questions about middle school before I moved to high school?
Do you have any questions?
Eight fifteen.
He did. Okay, these intervention letters that you send out are going to tell parents that the child might have been disoriented as much as expected.
Yes.
What kind of response do you get from that?
In December, the response was not as great as I would have liked it, because I invited the parents to come in, to be with us.
A private conference?
Mm-hmm, at their convenience. And so it was not as full of force I would have liked. And so one of the other things that I have done is to meet with the students, to speak with them individually, so that they understand where they are and what they need to do in order to move. Trying to not, don't want them to think that there's no hope for them at this point. And some of them get real frustrating, then they'll just quit. And so if I can't get all my parents in for whatever reason, I'll, we're talking to the students, and guidance has done a good job of meeting with the parents for IGP's. And so we have most of our 8th graders completed, and those parents that could not come in, we're rescheduling. And this week, the parents that we won't or can't get, then go step in as the parent and to help for those students for next year. So for Denmark Ola High School, enrollment as of the first was 190. There are 53 students that enrolled in our dual enrollment program. 22 total incidents in January of discipline. And on the 22nd, students participated South Carolina Duke, and that is the Department of Employment and Workforce. So representatives came in, well, students participated in a 25-minute Zoom session regarding workforce trends, what's coming, and why there were 154 students that participated. And that is to speak to the college and career readiness, of trying to prepare students who want to go straight into the workforce perhaps, or trying to figure out whether they want to go to college or go straight into the workforce. Students at Denmark Ola High School also participated in job shadowing, and those are the various companies they participated in, Swiss Chrono, Advance, TAVCO, Vanburg County Magistrate's Office, Voorhees University, Amazon, and Caton County Coroner's Office. We had our Black History Assembly with middle school participating in that as well on the 22nd of February, and thanks to Ms. Walker and Ms. Hurst for attending that event. Early in these days, it was the 28th, all staff were involved in various professional development. The SAT was administered to our juniors, which is the in-house SAT that is given to students. 26 juniors took the SAT, and tomorrow, 12 juniors will take the ACT. Benchmark testing was the first through the eighth, and the high school benchmarks in the EOC areas, which is Algebra I, English 2, Biology, and US History. Third quarter exams will take place the 14th through the 16th, and students, 45 students will be attending Boeing next week for the Dream Learners Tour. And students will tour and participate in STEM-based activities. And that tour was shut down due to COVID, and I think this is the first year that they were able to get it up and running, and it's really hard to get in for that tour, so that should, students will enjoy that. Voorhees University Tiger Day is the 17th at 9:00, and this is a recruitment event that's held on campus of Voorhees University, and they're looking up to 45 students attending that event. The ROTC Ball will be held on Friday, the 17th, from 6:00 to 10:00. All board members and Dr. Brown, you all are invited to attend with our students. College and Career Day is the same day as the middle school. There are 24 career presenters, and 10 colleges and universities will participate. The 8th graders will go over to participate with the colleges so that they will be aware of what it is they need to be looking forward to as they move in a couple of months. And Representatives from the Navy Army National Guard milleten, senior captain gown delivery is on the 27th of March, and report card pickup will be Thursday, the 30th, from 3:30 to 5:00.
All right, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Denise Miller has since joined us, so I will invite her up to the podium to provide us with her report for Vanburg Airheart Middle School.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
Greetings from the middle school. You have your report before you. Our current enrollment is 189 students. I believe we're down two students from the last time that we met. And you see our discipline, February was pretty peaceful at the middle school. We hope to continue. March is a long month, we're waiting for spring break. And we issued our Core 3 progress reports on February 13th. That evening, we had our Title I Engagement Parent Engagement Nights slash Open House. Our parents came in, they met with our guidance counselors, it's Hope by Ms. Smalls and myself. We conference with the students and the families individually and gave them a report on their students' progress towards meeting our promotion policy. I believe it was very well-attended. We didn't get 100%, but we did get a large group of students that, and their families that attended this event. After they met with Mrs. Smalls and myself, they then went on to their classroom where they received more detailed reports from their teacher. We had a school evacuation drill on February 17th, and then we completed our WEA testing. WEA is a test that measures the academic growth of our EL, English language, students. And then we kept them off, or actually, we integrated Black History Month through the entire month of February. Every single department found a way to incorporate Black History Month into our school. I conducted a school-wide trivia several times during the month. Our library held trivia. Our ELA departments, they researched the Civil Rights Movement. They researched the Emancipation Declaration, and they also analyzed Chikilimaka Bird. Our social studies department researched the lives of West African kings. They also looked at Charleston ironworker Philip Simmons and his famous gates. Our art department, they looked at prominent black visual artists and sculptors, potters, photographers, and they also studied the Della and Gigi basket weavers. Our sped department, our special education department focused on the life of Dr. Mark Luther King Jr. and read several of his texts and analyzed that. And if you look down on your report, you will see a bulletin board that we greet you as you walk into our school. That bulletin board was designed by Ms. Carol Brabham. She did a phenomenal job. I plan to kick that bulletin board up for the rest of the school year. Students, it seemed to captivate them as they go by, they're looking at the famous black Americans and heroes on the board, and our trivia was based on those individuals. And so that is all I have for the middle school. I ain't answering any questions for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? All right, item number five, which is the athletic report from Robert Williams, and I don't see that he's here.
Good evening, again.
Good evening.
For the record, Robert Williams owes me a lot of favors. Athletic report. Congratulations to the Denmark Ola Girls Basketball Team. They finished as the state runner-ups. Also, congratulations to Kamaya Jamison. She is the first female wrestler to ever in a high school compete in the wrestling individuals, and as a freshman, she finished fourth. Last night, the spring sports are in full effect. There will be 150 games slash matches or meets played over the next two months between Denmark Ola High School and Vanburg Airheart.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda, item number six, which is approval of the 2023-2024 school calendar. And I will turn that back over to Ms. Ray.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good to see everybody. So as you know, a couple of weeks ago, we had a call meeting for the board to do a first reading on the school, at the annual calendar for next school year, and it was Option 6. So for the '23-'24 calendar, I bring forth to you tonight again for a second reading of Option 6, or proposed school calendar for next school year. As you recall, at our last meeting, I did say that we take it back to the principals one more time, make it, make sure that it looks the way we need it to look. And after a meeting with the principals and several conversations, I bring forth to you tonight the calendar as we, as the principals and I wish to present it to you. Couple of the changes that were made, based on teacher input and the principal's input, was in July, the 19th and 20th, you may recall, we had the 19th and 20th mark as professional development days, and they asked to switch those after talking with teachers in the buildings to make the 19th and 20th teacher preparation days. That's at that time that we have dedicated two teachers to be in their classrooms. And then we put the two PD days all in succession, three days to be the following week. Also, on the intercession weeks, it was much discussion about whether we would be providing two and/or three or four days of after-intercession help. Also, on the intercession weeks, it was much discussion about whether we would be providing two and or three or four days of after-intercession help. And what we quickly realized is not only that, but we do need to give teachers time to prep on those days as well. So we slid those over to Tuesday and Wednesday on the intercession weeks, with Mondays being the teacher's prep day just for those weeks, and data review days, data dive days, and prep day. We may, I am asking the board to do a second reading to this tonight with the understanding that based on the number of students eligible to attend and based on the number of staff we have teaching the program, with the understanding we may need to alter this at the first nine weeks when school starts. And we see how the program has gotten right.
When you say that you may need to alter it, what are you, what were you?
The intercession days.
Okay, so you have two circles.
Instead of the two, we may add a third. So we've had a third circle. But we want to wait till we get to the end of that first nine weeks and see how many students are eligible for it. And do we need to do that?
Okay, so technically, there's no change in moving any days around.
No, it would just be a circle.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Sure. Well, hold on just a second. Let's go ahead and I'll entertain a motion in a second, and then we'll discuss it.
That is true. Yes. At least come on like, you know, commotion to approve a second reading of the calendar for Banburg County School District twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four.
And is that what, I'm sorry.
With correction, with the understanding of the intercession.
Okay. Okay, we have a question in a second. Discussion. I'll turn it over to you.
Excuse me. Dr. Brown, may I ask, could you probably understand the rationale, whatever, for the professional development at the end of the school? I don't really know what happens for teachers at the end of the school.
Yeah, go by. Okay, closing up your classroom, you're getting ready for summer school. Whether there's any professional development that we haven't been able to squeeze in throughout the year, we will, we will do that at the end of the year, for instance. Because we have ATSI schools and designated schools, priority schools, there's mandatory PD. But with there only being so many PD days during the year, we have to schedule some of that for the end of the year.
Okay, but it's possible some of this will also be the teacher prep time.
Could be, yes.
I can't remember.
And for certain, there are certain populations that have to go to Chinese bridges at special education. We have a lot more professional development, things that we have to attend that other teachers do not. Therefore, if a special education group of teachers is at PD, say with me or someone else, but yet, genia teachers are not needed, they're in their classrooms. So it's targeted PD. It may not be for the whole district wide, for every teacher in the district, but it could be for certain populations.
Yes, and that concerns that every teacher would get a little project.
Yes, they would. They do. They absolutely do at the end of the year.
I just have.
Sure.
Just one quick question. I know when I was in the classroom, the custodians were badly to get the school ready for the opening day. So that won't be a problem with starting so much earlier.
We're going to work it out. In fact, we've already been in discussion with the principals about how to tailor summer school, be it on specific hallways, so that they can get ready though. The biggest problem is Richard Carroll Elementary School. We all know that. It's the biggest school in the district. However, in conversation with Dr. Evans, she's getting a plan together, working with custodians on what she could, what hallways and classrooms she can designate so that they can complete it, and then we can rotate students while that gets done.
Any other questions? All right. If you're in favor of approving the second reading for option C of the Banburg County School District Calendar two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-four, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. We are down to item number seven, which is the Student Staff Recognition and Superintendent's Report. And that will be to Dr. Brown.
First of all, I'd like to reiterate on the athletic, athletic report, I'd like to congratulate the Denmark Oller Lady Vikings, Vikings Girl varsity basketball team. They played a phenomenal game Saturday in Aiken. For those of you that was able to come see that, it was, it was a show. But they did an outstanding job, and they've had an outstanding season. And to go and play for a state title two years in a row is, is a phenomenon. So I too would like to congratulate Coach Kenneth Jones and Coach Ken Jones and their staff and the whole varsity Vikings, Lady Vikings, for a job well done. And not to, not to forget about our boys, but they too. Our Denmark Oller Vikings Boys Rugby Ball Team had a phenomenal season. Well done to them. I too would be remiss, I would like to back up and go back to the Banburg Airheart Red Raider Wrestling Team. I would like to acknowledge Coach Terrell Haynes and Marcus Kane. The wrestlers did have had a phenomenal season this year. And given that we just completed Black History Month, and now we're into Women's History Month, I can't stress enough Kamaya Jamison. Ms. Kamaya Jamison is the lady wrestler that went to the state. She is only a freshman, and she was competing for a state title against four or five varsity juniors and seniors. And so I would just like to recognize Kamaya Jamison again. She is trailblazing, setting the precedent for girls breaking into traditionally dominated male sports. And she did a phenomenal job. She went up there, and she come home third in the state, and that's a phenomenon. So please, I would be really happy to. She's making history. Also, I'd like to let the district, the listeners know, and the people in the audience tonight and board to know that on behalf of the National Child Identification Program, national identification kits will be provided to all K through twelve students in South Carolina through a partnership with the South Carolina Attorney General's Office and the South Carolina Department of Education, and partners such as Duke Energy and Dominion Energy. Kits are eclus, at-home fingerprint kits, to be completed and kept by parents and guardians. And they will not be entered into any database. The identification kit may be provided to federal, state, tribal, or local law enforcement agencies to help locate or try to missing or trafficking child should that occur. Kits will be delivered to school districts that actually are here. But the State Department of Education has asked all superintendents to hold the kits until we receive further direction and communications to go home to parents. So they are here. They'll be coming out real soon. And we have received our school improvement designations. As you all may recall, I talked a little bit in the previous board meetings. We get an annual school report card. And then we get school designations based on our subgroups, our subpopulations, like race, ethnicity, gender, poverty levels, and special education status. We have received those designations, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Phyllis Ove Street. She's our federal programs director, and she can, in your board packet. This is a tremendous amount of information comes to us in a right-lengthy report. But Ms. Ove Street has been so kind to condense it down to an understandable layman's term report for everybody. So I'm going to let her take over the presentation and kind of explain this to you and where our schools fail in this report card. Ms. Ove Street.
Evening, everybody. Good evening. Good to see y'all. Hadn't seen y'all in a while. So hopefully, in your packet, you received the chart. And we also shared with you the official memo from the State Department. I'm actually going to guess that a lot of you didn't read it because you're still awake.
And we're still awake.
All my stars. Anyway, just to give you some backgrounds, some history. All of this came about with the Every Student Succeeds Act in two thousand seventeen, which prior to that was No Child Left Behind. When it was reauthorized, it became the No, the Every Student Succeeds Act. We have always had to have school improvement designations. We had them in No Child Left Behind. We have them now under the Every Student Succeeds. This is all, the state has tried to plan and submitted, all the states have their own plan. And not just South Carolina, and submitted to the federal government and get it approved. For these designations and the timeframes, the schools are in them. Designations are based on the comparison of performance to the highest performing identified comprehensive school improvement school. Please don't make me say that again. Because that's the first item on your chart is comprehensive school improvement. That's like the house food, except it's like the worst designation. If you are in comprehensive school improvement, you are overall in like the bottom ten percent of schools in South Carolina with your overall performance. As you can see, we don't have anybody in comprehensive school improvement. However, they run the data overall for schools by grade bands, grade levels. And then that's how they determine who the bottom ten percent are and who the bottom five percent are. We don't have anybody that's a CSI school. We do have, I did want to say that the first round was in two thousand nineteen. And in two thousand nineteen, in Banburg, what was Banburg one, Banburg Airheart Middle School was identified for ATSI for disabled subgroup. And then in Banburg two, Denmark Oller Elementary and Denmark Oller Middle School were both identified for the ATSI subgroup. So that's where we started with the initial designation. We should have had new designations in fall of twenty-one. But something that happened in spring of twenty. I can't remember. We did not give tests in spring of twenty, obviously because of COVID. We did give tests again in spring of twenty-one. However, due to COVID and the lingering effects, we did not have report card ratings for twenty-one, twenty-two, and fall of twenty-two. So the years, the data years that have been used for the new designations are seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-one, twenty-two. And so for particularly your ATSI schools, the overall subgroup performance that falls below the bottom five percent of the highest CSI identified school in their grade span are identified as subgroups for ATSI. And just want you to know, we've only had, we've only had these designations for about three or four weeks. We extended them back in December. The state, I think, made a good faith effort to get them out to us. Then they released them to us in January. They were embargoed, had to claw back because there were errors, and then had to claw back again. So we've only had these for about three weeks. And we've been expecting them and waiting on them. You know, it's been the state department, it's been a holdup. So I will say that both BEMS and Denmark Oller Middle School exited ATSI Disabled Status. And that means that they had to improve over that two thousand nineteen baseline data for the subgroup performance. Unfortunately, Denmark Oller Elementary School is in its second round as ATSI. And what that means is that they did not improve over that two thousand nineteen performance because they went back and compared it to the original performance data to see if you were going to exit. So they are in their second round. And also, Richard Carroll Elementary School was identified, and you see that in your chart. They were also identified for ATSI Disabled. And that was based on the new data in two thousand twenty-two. So this is done every three years. So for both schools to exit, they will have to improve over that two thousand twenty-two benchmark that was set for those subgroups. If Denmark Oller Elementary School does not improve over that two thousand twenty-two benchmark, they would actually become a comprehensive school improvement school. So that's, we do not want that to happen. But that is what will, what could occur if they don't improve. The next round of designations for these schools will be two thousand twenty-five. So it takes you three years to get in. Three plus two more. It takes you three years to get in and then three years to get out. So they will, you'll have three years to improve and work under instructional practices and different things in order to get out. I will mention, the seeds, if you move on to the state designations, you will see that Denmark Oller, while they did exit ATSI, they actually were identified as a priority school. That is a state designation. It is included in the accountability plan that goes to the VEDs, but it's a state designation. That's in the bottom ten percent. My understanding is, and it's gotten explained to us a couple of different ways, but what I have heard them say is that they go back and look at that bottom ten percent every year. And then when you are no longer in that bottom ten percent, you become a priority. But then there's other places, this is where the state is driving crazy. Other places where it says it takes three years. I don't think it takes three years. I think once they, you know, like, for example, they could in theory improve this year and come off a priority. But if they went back down next year, then they could go back into priority. But we have a webinar on Thursday that we hope will give us a little more clarity, particularly about priority schools. Because one of the other things that's happened is, we first started this back in nineteen, there was a group of people at the State Department in the office that handles this. That office has turned over about five times. And but it seems as if the ladies that are there now are really on top of this and really want that to be a very robust office to assist us in these things. So we feel like we're going to get good help from them as far as the process is concerned. Because the first round, we really worked, it was just like, yeah, write your plans and do your best. So we're, we're very cautiously optimistic about the assistance that we're going to get moving forward. Everyone will have to write a plan. We have a template for the ATSI plans. We have not received a template for the priority plans. I did find out today that the priority school is getting like forty-five thousand dollars. We were told that the ATSI schools could probably get approximately forty thousand to each. However, those will all be district. Even though the plans will be about the schools, the district is responsible for the plan. The district is responsible for ensuring that the plans are implemented, the money is spent properly. So there'll be a lot of oversight from the district level. So just to give y'all some additional data, and y'all might have seen this in the TND over the weekend, there were three hundred and forty-five schools identified for ATSI in this round compared to two hundred and seven in two thousand nineteen. The majority of those three hundred and forty-five schools were identified for this disabled subgroup. And that obviously speaks to the fact that these students, it's taking them a little while longer to recover from all the disruption that went on that happened. So we've got good data, and we, you know, we've got an eye on good instructional practices, and so that's where we're going to go. And just very briefly, the last three boxes on your state designation, this is something brand new from the legislature. I thought I had overlooked something or missed something, but the meeting that I was at when they talked about these underperforming schools and chronically underperforming districts, everyone else at the meeting was like, where did that come from? And so this is something the legislature came up with last year. And the State Department ladies, really, the information you have on the chart is basically what they had. So we don't know, probably isn't any money. And it's, in a way, it's just a way for the legislature to find another way to kind of beat up on, on both these schools. Or did I say that wrong?
That's, that's why we have a TBD.
So what questions do you have?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, when you said that the students, looking here, Dan is of the student, so is it Johnny from this year? And now comparing with Johnny's group again two or two years later? Or is it Johnny from third and now?
No, it's each year's data. So, right, it's, so the baseline, baseline data was set in two thousand nineteen. So it's your data from this year, the students who tested. In other words, it's not longitudinal. It's, yeah, this is your data from this year. Those students, for example, the first time when Banburg Airheart was designated, we determined that pretty much most of the kids that quote-unquote caused them to go into ATSI had already moved on to the high school. And so that's, that's kind of where you're at. Many times, the students who have, you know, or who have contributed to this, and I don't, and I don't think it's coming out right, but it is the student data, you know, so they have moved on to the next school in the future system.
Anybody have any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate you explaining that thoroughly. It helps to understand it. I mean, I read it and I got it, but I, because I've been having some communication with Dr. Brown. But we appreciate you explaining it in layman's terms.
To get quick, this. To get quick, this.
We got it. Thank you so much. All right. I'm not sure if your report is concluded, if you have additional items. It is concluded?
Good.
Okay. All right, so we are down to item number eight, which is the request for out-of-state overnight trips. And Dr. Brown, you can guide us on that.
Bring forth the first request for overnight trip is the concert band, which is to go to Carolins, April the 7th, at 8:15 a.m., and return that same day at 9:30. But because half of Carolins is in the state of North Carolina, I'm asking the board to approve it because that is out of state. They will miss one day at school, and the students have all raised the funds to go to this, and so I'm asking the board tonight to approve it. And also, you have laid an updated list on your table tonight. We have one additional student that we need to, you always bring your list of students and chaperones that attend these trips. There was one additional student added late afternoon. So because people had replaced the list, the safety with the list that just have handed you up for the meeting.
Okay.
But I think you got all the information there that you.
All right. Why don't you go ahead and go through the second one as well?
The second trip comes tonight from the RCEA Safety Patrol, would also like to take their students to Carolins, for the students who have served in the youth league, for the students who serve on the, the school safety patrol team, they want to visit the youth leadership that at Carolins. This is on April 21st. They'd be leaving at 6 a.m., and they would return the same day around 7:30 p.m. that night. Funds have been raised by parents, so in their cause to the district. And you have all of the chaperones there.
Mm-hmm.
And the rest of the students who are on the safety patrol team.
All right, board members, you have had an opportunity actually to review all of this information prior to tonight's meeting because it was provided to you in your board packet. You've heard Dr. Brown. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to approving these two requests for the out-of-state overnight trip?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to accept the recommendation for overnight, for have a family trip for the concert band to the safety.
Okay, for approval. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor of this, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, ayes have it, and the motion carries for the approval of the out-of-state trips for the concert band to Carolins and Richard Carroll Elementary Safety Patrol to Carolins. All right. Next up is item number nine, which is the SCAGO bond resolution.
Let's get on the floor. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First, let me apologize for interrupting, but Ms. Blossom's daughter was texting and calling me, and so she had a family emergency, and she asked me, please ask her mom to leave. So sorry for that interruption, but I felt like Ms. Blossom needed to.
That's okay.
Step out. Yeah. So each year, we have, a bond agreement came last year to discuss this in detail, but each year we issue a SCAGO 10, or SCAGO bond with the districts across the state. We issue this bond to keep our mileage at a level that the taxpayers won't see an increase this year, a decrease next year, maximum increase the next year. So that is what I'm proposing tonight, is to issue another SCAGO bond. It'll issue in May of this year. And it's to do the maintenance across the district that we don't normally have budgeted in our budget. It's for the big items that we, that we have to do each year. So I need approval for the SCAGO 10, or SCAGO bond if we wish to participate in this year.
Okay, board members, in particular the ones that, who were here last year, you are familiar with the SCAGO bond resolution, and you have heard what Ms. Fur has indicated to us, this is something that does occur on an annual basis that we have been doing for a number of years. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to approval and moving forward with the SCAGO bond?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the issuance of the annual SCAGO bond.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries. You have freedom to forward on that.
And if y'all could, right after we get out of possession, you'll sign it for us.
Absolutely. Sure will. And while you're standing.
Okay. The next item in your packet is my financial report. And you have everything in from the check registers to the budget, of course. And we're on target, our ideal percentage is 34%. And. We're at 34%, so we're on target for our budget this, this year. I'll be going to SCASBO tomorrow. I'll leave tomorrow, be behind the rest of the week. I hope while I'm there to find out some information about the upcoming budget year. Right now, the state has been fighting everything, so personally, I don't think matter, but they think matter. So I haven't listed a lot on the budget. So I hope while we're there, we will be in meetings with different people from the State Department, so I hope to find out some stuff so that we can then SCAGO the budget for our session.
Okay. All right. Board members, I know that you have had an opportunity to receive and review the financial report that's been provided to us prior to tonight's meeting. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to accepting this report as it's been presented to us?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think the motion cabinet accepted most of the financial report from Ms. Fur.
All right. We have a motion on the floor, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor of approval of the financial report as it's been presented to us, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and that report is accepted. Next on the item is number 11, which is visitors' comments, and I do not see that we have anyone that has signed up for visitors' comments. So we'll move down to item number 12, which is executive session. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to going into executive session?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
And we did this time we enter executive session.
All right, we have a motion on the floor that we enter into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second that we enter into executive session. Any discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor of moving into executive session, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries. We will now move into executive session for item A, employment personnel. Number one, personnel recommendations for hire. Number two, personnel recommendations for resignation. Item B, discussion of release of students. Item C, contractual matters regarding, number one, incidental to potential sale of property. And item D, discussion of superintendent evaluations. I would like to thank you all for coming. We will move now into executive session. You are free to remain outside and stay, and return back when we are back in open session. Ms. Ma, have a wonderful evening and thank you all for attending.
Okay, board members, I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Madam Chairman, if this is fine or if I can use it, we can have it in executive session.
All right, motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? Here or none, if you're in favor of moving out of executive session back into open session, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, ayes have it, the motion carries, we are now back in open session. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to items listed on the agenda?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve personnel recommendations for hire for employees one, A, B, C, D, and E.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? Here or none, if you're in favor of this, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, ayes have it, the motion carries. We are down to A, is it A two?
B.
I'm sorry, what, there was no action on A two, personnel recommendations for resignation, no action on that. B, what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the recommendation for student transfer for student B one.
All right, motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
A motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? Here or none, if you're in favor of this, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, ayes have it, the motion carries. With regards to executive session, C, contractual matter regarding number one incidental potential sale of property, there was no action on that. And then item D, discussion of superintendent evaluation, there was no discussion on that. We are now down to item number 14, which is to adjourn the meeting, what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
At this time, I make the motion that we adjourn this meeting.
We have a motion on the floor and a second to adjourn, is there any discussion? Here or none, if you're in favor of adjourned the meeting, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, ayes have it, the motion carries, and this will be adjourned.